I called to meet the call order meeting of the town, the city's and town board. And we'll begin with the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll do a roll call of this house board.
Good evening, Bill Burger, Toronto Board.
What do you think Barbara Laras, second ward, Anne Berger, third ward?
My question, third ward.
Brian Shaw, fifth ward.
Andrew Shunsen, sixth ward.
Jessica Moore, seventy, seventh ward.
Rebecca Edwards, town supervisor. And we should have her as thick and wish her the best that she's better soon, but very glad to have Jessica with us tonight. Just a couple of announcements, first of all, we'd like to do a moment of silence to the three U.S. soldiers who were killed in Oregon. If you want to take a minute to pick out them and their families and keep them in a house. Thank you. And I have.
I can't hear back here.
Are you clear?
I can't hear. Do you know, can you hear Michael? Can you hear, can you guys hear? That must be my hearing, you don't know.
All right, it's, uh.
Doreen says we can't hear at all.
All right, let me speak for just a minute here, are people able to hear now on Zoom? Because I think the mic should be on now.
I can hear you.
That's better. Okay.
Thank you.
Let us lean a little more into the front.
What the fuck? I don't want to be on the mic.
I wanted to make one announcement here before we suspend rules of public comment. And that is just a public announcement about related to all the rain that we have been having. And I think this is something that the town might want to be trying to communicate to residents more. And we might find new ways to do that, strategies for reaching out. But when we have, when the wastewater system is, is heavily impacted, because it has been recently by lots and lots of rain. The wastewater department is dealing with even more volume than they might otherwise. Because some plumbers, probably a long time ago, have connected people's sump pumps into the wastewater system. So a lot of clear water, which is stormwater, water that's coming from storms, is coming into our wastewater system. So that's actually against the law. It's probably something most people don't know about without digging up their sump pump connections to see whether or not they actually, you know, where they drain. But it's something that town residents should be aware of, because an awful lot of houses built decades ago are in fact sending water into the wastewater system. And that's putting a lot of extra pressure on the system at a time when we have, you know, heavy, heavy volume of water right now. So it's something to be aware of, some towns have offered incentives to try to encourage people to fix the problem. We might want to talk about that, but it is a pretty widespread problem. Wastewater Department's reporting to be, you know, a pretty major issue in terms of water volume. So that's something we want to think about when we get into sort of public service announcements to homeowners, to pay attention to that. And if you do have a sump pump, be aware of where it's removing the water, should be going out into your yard or into the stormwater system. Not into, into the wastewater, shouldn't be tied in with the wastewater system. Okay? All right, let me open the floor, well, let me take a motion to suspend the rules in order to have public comment.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then, do you have any members here in the room first who would like to, 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 um, to speak? Anybody here in the room? All right, and then, and there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak? I see at least one here.
Okay, I was told she should be able to unmute herself by I T.
Go ahead, Doreen, you're on.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question about the agenda item number three for the NISHIP Excelsior Plan. And that's the town's benefit program that's applied to employees. So I'm looking at the resolution and it says that there was an unexpected forty-nine percent rise in premiums that was only announced in December. That, that seems a little strange as most people have to make their plan selections, like the October, November timeframe. And, and the town didn't know about this until December?
Yeah, I can speak to that briefly, and then some folks who were on the board may also want to follow up. Yes, it's a statewide problem. NISHIP is a state agency and not necessarily subject to all the same rules as other insurers. And it was very late in the game last year when the projected insurance rate rise for the Excelsior Plan turned out to be, well, the, the, the actual premium hike turned out to be much higher than what was expected. I think that decision was made on December first. And in municipalities all across the state, that was after the budget process had been done. And in fact, legally after budgets had to be adopted. So it was, it, it's something that NISHIP is hearing about from municipalities across the state.
Yeah, that's something, because on November fifteenth, at the town board meeting, Councilman Zuffon talked about, you know, the savings that the town was going to get from switching over to, to NISHIP. And, you know, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars was going onto the ambulance, money was going for dial-a-ride. And the tax levy was going to be increased by a hundred thousand dollars. So it sounds like you were expecting considerable savings and actually ended up with the opposite.
Yes, that's true, Doreen, that we did not expect close to a forty-nine percent increase. Nothing that was told to us by any of our representatives ever saw such an increase more than twelve point five percent.
So it does.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe something we talk about a little later in the agenda as well, but that's, that's, the, the answer is in the affirmative, yes. It was December first when that announcement was made, and so it was a, it was a shock statewide for, for any municipalities that are in the NISHIP, either the Empire or Excelsior programs. Anybody else for public comment? I, I make a motion to, to return to the regular rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we have three agenda items for the special meeting tonight. The first is for, for, to appoint Manal Patel as our new town comptroller. The second is to appoint Arturo Carlos Rojas in the Water Department. And the third is to address this issue with NISHIP healthcare, health insurance coverage for employees. Okay? So, um.
Okay.
I'll start with word one.
Word one, on number one. So, you know, resolution one, be it resolved pursuant to town law twenty-three B. Supervisor is, supervisor is authorized to offer the position of town comptroller to Manal Patel for a term through December thirty-first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five. And an annual salary, salary of ninety-five thousand dollars with standard town benefits for her term to commence on February first, twenty twenty-four. I might add that the Town Consultants Alliance Risk Group also conducted a background investigation. And also with this position required a forty-five day notice of termination is required. So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I had the pleasure of interviewing her twice, and I was really impressed with her background and her experience. And she's new to the area, and I think it's been a really lucky find for us. I think she's going to be a good fit.
Wonderful. Other discussion?
Yeah, I just, I did sit in on an interview with Manel as well. She's very articulate, she's very qualified in a lot of areas. She lacks a little bit of municipal experience, but she is willing to train on that. And she took a significant salary decrease to take that training. And the other candidates that we interviewed for just really didn't stand out as well as Manal, even though they might have had a little more municipal experience. So I'm comfortable moving forward, giving her an opportunity, as we have people in place to help train her, so.
Terrific, anyone else?
I also agree, we, we all interviewed her, and she's local, and she's ready to dive in, has a lot of experience. And what she doesn't know, she's very, you know, willing to train, and I think it's an excellent fit for a town, so thank you.
Any other board members who'd like to speak? I'll just say that although it says that's subject to a background check in the resolution, as Bill I think already noted, she did, that, that, she's, she's ready to go, we're all cleared, we're, so, so that, that hurdle's been passed. And we're looking forward to having her start in two days, which is going to be terrific in town hall. Much needed, so. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero.
Resolution two is appointing Arturo Carlos Rojas to the position of water maintenance mechanic with the Water Department. His salary would be twenty-five dollars an hour, and he'd be starting February eighth. He has a probation period of not less than eight nor more than twenty-six weeks per civil service law. And the town supervisor is authorized to execute and file all documentation required by Duchess County Department of Human Resources in connection with this appointment. So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the resolution carries seven zero.
Whereas the town of Poughkeepsie with the concurrent, uh, concurrence of the bargaining units representing town employees who are members of the Teamsters Union and the PBA. It designated the NISHIP Excelsior Plan to be the health insurance provider for the involved union employees, also for the town's non-union employees. And whereas a sharp, unexpected forty-nine percent increase in premiums for the twenty twenty-four NISHIP was announced in December of twenty twenty-three. Whereas this premium change will erase any financial benefits that the town has expected to achieve by shifting employees to the Excelsior Plan, which benefits were anticipated to make possible the funding of employee reimbursement accounts for the involved non-union and union employees, and raises for the town non-union employees. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town board authorizes the town supervisor to negotiate with the Teamsters and PBA bargaining units to enter into memorandums of agreement, MOAs, with them to rescind the changes to the NISHIP Excelsior Plan for the involved union employees, and to terminate the town's ongoing HRA obligations to the Teamsters member, members, while honoring any Teamster HRA obligations which may have accrued, occurred, accrued. And be it further resolved that in any event, including the declination of either or both of the involved unions to enter into an MOA, the town supervisor may nonetheless rescind any health insurance designation of the Excelsior Plan for the town's non-union employees, so as return them to or continue them in their current coverage status without HRAs. And be it further resolved that all twenty twenty-four non-union salary adjustments previously approved by this board shall be, shall be, remain undisturbed, as it, as will the terms of the collective bargaining agreements with the involved unions except as provided herein. And be it further resolved that the adoption of this resolution, the actions authorized thereby do not constitute an action requiring a State Environmental Quality Review Act review. Lots of reviews. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. All right, discussion.
Okay, so I'll start. So for non-union, we, we, we switched to the health plan and gave them a percentage based on the Excelsior Plan taking place of two point five percent. We're still going to give them the two point five, but go back to the, the old plan. Why would we do that when we don't have a contract? That's, that's, the taxpayer's paying twice. We can't do anything with the bargaining units, but we certainly have control over that.
So you're, if I understand correctly, you're arguing that in.
No, I'm asking a question. I'm not arguing, I'm asking a question.
Okay. My answer would be that if the town had wanted to reconsider the salary adjustment in addition to reconsidering the insurance, the time to do that would have been between December first and the end of the year. If the finance committee had said, oh, my gosh, we have got a problem here because this rate came in at forty-nine percent. But people have already expected that salary adjustment, they've made their family plans for the year. Paychecks are, are, you know, are, are started for twenty twenty-four. And I can't see that it's justified because the town's expectations for the Excelsior rate were not as the town anticipated that the employees should bear the, 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 the burden of then having a salary rollback this year, you know, a month into the, into the, into the year. I, I, that doesn't make sense to me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but their salary wouldn't have taken, the extra two point five percent wouldn't have taken effect until after the Excelsior Plan took place, so they haven't got that money yet.
I think it's been, was part of the agreement made in November. I, I'm happy to hear from other board members, but, but I would feel very uncomfortable with saying, well, there was a mistake made here in terms of our, and, you know, our expectations weren't fulfilled. It was the town that was seeking to move non-union employees and in the negotiations, other employees from Empire to Excelsior or from M V P to Excelsior. And, and, and therefore, I think, you know, I would feel very uncomfortable saying that, well, we're going to also, you know, clawback the, the salary adjustment. I think the town, you know, we, 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 this, this decision by NISHIP certainly leaves us with a budget issue to discuss this year. But I would feel very reluctant to say, whoops, whoops, we really want to undo this. And that also means that we need to clawback, you know, a, a salary adjustment that people and their families are counting on.
I think the taxpayers are counting on what we said as well. So now you have the taxpayers paying twice. No one, no one expected a forty-nine percent increase. But we, we have a collective bargaining unit with two unions, we can't go backwards on that.
Right.
But this doesn't take effect until February first, so they don't have anything to go by.
If other board members would like to speak, I have a couple of other things to say, but I'd like to see what other people would like to say.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, and I, I guess I thought this may be discussion in executive session. But, but yeah, I, we, we met with the town employees and some, you know, union, and we heard, you, we heard a lot.
This was not, the, a meeting we had with non-union employees on Friday, right? Yes.
Okay, right. So what I'm all about with this type of thing is consistency, whether there's union or not. So, you know, the forty-nine percent rise is very stressful because, you know, NISHIP apparently is the only agency that's able to do that or has done that. The other agencies and the other insurance companies have been on a nine-plus percent increase. So, um, yeah, I mean, regarding salaries, it's awful difficult. I mean, I'm sure there are some, you know, legalities to it. Employers or towns can take them away, but however, if they're, you know, especially with a, you know, union, you're going to get into difficulty with doing that, taking that away after it's already been announced and approved. So we can do some other measures, like maybe to restrict it next year. You know, rather than if the two point five percent came in, we'd have to consider that for next year's salaries increase. I think that's something reasonable to discuss. But again, consistent across the board between union and non-union employees. I think that's what I'm looking for, so.
Well, we've always been consistent with all our employees, we've tried to give them the best we can, give them in every contract. So yeah, that was, that was my next statement, Bill, I was going to say that going forward for next year, if we stick to the plan, we are going to move forward, and we will have to look at that for next year. That has to come in the budget process as getting a raise for your next contract.
And, and, and just speaking to the employees, I mean, there was some good intentions here. I mean, nobody, I think, intended to hurt anybody or to have this happen. But as I understand it, the forty-nine percent increase was something that they did, that no one anticipated. And our cost savings anticipated were essentially gone. So now we're down to, you know, doing the right thing for the employees, what they would like for their, you know, medical plans that we've heard. And trying to, you know, minimize the cost to the town, which is extensive. And this would do that.
If, if I could ask a question, once the NISHIP, I was not, I was not here in December. In December, after the NISHIP and Excelsior forty-nine percent rate hike was announced, what discussions did the finance committee have in the month of December about how to respond to that?
We didn't get the rates until much later, and it was, there was no time to do anything with it. We didn't know the final numbers yet. We didn't get those numbers.
NISHIP announced them at the beginning of December.
They never got, that we've never, I got notified, I didn't, I notified, I was notified that there was an increase, I didn't know what the number was.
So the finance committee didn't know?
Not, not at that point, that you're asking me for.
Yeah, not, not at December first, not.
Not at December first, we did not know.
Do you know when you did know?
I do not know. I don't recall, actually, but I could check.
Rebecca, I think that in, in the meeting, whoever the insurance person was there, forgive me, I forget his name. He was saying that it wasn't forthcoming, you know, the announcement. So out of fairness to every, you know, that I don't think it came in a timely manner. That, that forty-nine, and it's a drastic increase, it's unheard of.
If we had known about that, we would have done something immediately, I guarantee that.
Okay. That's helpful to know.
So just to be clear, that this will be in plain English for folks like me. To, the, the salary will stay, but the HRA will be withdrawn, and we're going to go reverse the plans.
Well, to complicate that a little bit more, so the, the, the board has the power tonight to make the decision on behalf of non-union employees, from whom we heard on Friday, as you said, to maintain current coverage for those employees and not move them to Excelsior. Well, yes, retaining the salary adjustment as made. The town, by this resolution, the board would authorize the supervisor to discuss with the two relevant bargaining units whether or not to proceed with Excelsior, or in the case of the Teamsters, to continue on Excelsior because they, they had a different start date of January the first. So that we're not changing the coverage tonight, but because those, that, unlike non-union employees, in those cases, the switch to Excelsior was made as part of a union negotiation. And therefore, without touching any other parts of those, you know, agreements, going back to discuss with those two bargaining units their inclinations and to discuss this, this Excelsior again, given the conditions as they are now.
Okay.
Given the changed findings.
Just to follow on, if I may, so, so I understood at that meeting that the drop dead date to do that would be February first. So have you, have we been able to go and get an extension on that?
We have, and NISHIP has said that this can be worked out in March. Obviously, you know, it would be ideal for those employees who are shifting over on February first to see if we can do it in that timeframe, but we have more time if we need it. We have until March first.
Has anyone had any contact with the state about the, the increase? Are they looking at moving it backwards, or?
There's no, NISHIP's rates are NISHIP's rates, there's no move to change them back. Have a lot of people had contact with NISHIP? Yes, have a lot of municipalities contacted NISHIP and talked about the hardship? We, we spoke with the, with, with Mr. Daniels and the insurance folks about that as well, that, yes, this is a, a very difficult situation for a lot of municipalities. Not all municipalities use NISHIP, but those that do, this has been an issue, and people have contacted the state. Is there going to be a reversal? No.
And what was clear from the meeting Friday was the impact, it was pretty much unanimous. These employees were hurting, and they were clear, and they're depending on the board to do the right thing. And I think what we have before us is a resolution that gets us in that direction.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ryan, there was, there was specifics, a lot of specifics about specific procedures that really tripled in cost, which, you know, was really, was hurtful, so.
I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could.
Sure.
Um, so regarding healthcare increases, I mean, you know, it's, everything costs a lot of money, and healthcare is one of, the, the biggest drain, every seventy cents of every dollar spent in this country goes towards healthcare. So people need their healthcare and they rely on it, and a lot of people take jobs because of it, and I get that. Like, you know, the benefit, they might not make a ton of money, but the healthcare for their family is huge. On the other side of that is everyone's got a story, right? Everyone's got someone who's sick or a chronic illness, or a kid who needs this, and, and I, and I'm very sensitive to that. So we're never going to fix everything. No plan is going to be perfect. I work for a major healthcare company during the day, and I get one plan, I don't get to pick. It's the one, it's all I get. It's not even that great. I'd probably be better off on the NISHIP. So I recognize how sensitive the issue is, but again, not everyone gets to pick. And, and not everybody relies on their healthcare as much as the next person. So one size is not going to fit all, and we're not going to make everybody happy. That being said, as somebody who was on the finance committee last year and had, you know, went through all this at the end of the year, and, 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 you know, learned a lot about things, we did not know about the increase until much later in December. And we were all kind of, you know, snowballed, if you will, into that. We knew there was going to be an increase, we just didn't know. So unfortunately, we're stuck here now between a rock and a hard place, and we're trying to make the best of it that we possibly can. That being said, there's no way we can take the raises away from people. I mean, that is just, that, that would just be awful.
If I could, I'd just like to add that, we did tell everyone when we negotiated the contract that if the health insurance didn't work out, we would make changes. We just asked them to give it a year.
Yes, I do recall that being said several times, like, give it a year. So, um, you know, in a room full of employees, you're going to hear all, you know, all sides. I hate it, I love it, I wish I could have this, but could I have this? Again, it's not perfect, it's healthcare. Especially in this country, our healthcare is, is pretty terrible and pretty costly. So I'm sensitive to all that, and I want the employees to be happy. You know, I certainly want, a happy workplace is a, is a good workplace. People, I want people to want to come to work, I want people to want to have the benefits that, that suits their family as best as they possibly can. So healthcare aside for the moment, the raises, I mean, I, I couldn't imagine taking them away from people. That would just be crazy, crazy talk. So I'm for keeping the raises. You just can't take that away from people. So that, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, and I agree, being concerned for the taxpayers, we're all very much concerned for the taxpayers, but the tax rates are set. The bills have been set, we're done for this year. So this is not going to affect our taxpayers, and we can do things this year to make sure it doesn't impact them next year. I know Rebecca's got several ideas to find ways to bring more income into the town. So we aren't going to, we're going to do everything we can not to increase tax rates, and if possible, lower them down a little bit. And one thing we can do now too is take away these HRAs. This is going to cost us a lot of money, and will also help finance us going back to our original healthcare plan. So I think this is something we really need to move forth on, and.
And then you're going to hear people that love the HRA. You know what I mean, to my point, you can.
No, in, in that meeting room, I asked that point blank, if, you know, if going back to your original insurance plan, we have to take back the HRAs, does that upset, it upset anyone? And no one raised their hand. It was pretty much universal, everyone did not like this healthcare plan, and we're willing to give up the HRAs to do it.
Again, that was in the meeting with non, non-union employees.
With the non-union people, so it was a select sampling.
I just, two things I would add, just to what Anne was saying and others were saying, is that, uh, both Anne's, actually, that, that I think benefits are important for every employee, but perhaps particularly for public employees, right? People are not working for the town of Poughkeepsie to make the big bucks, but people account on good benefits as being part of a package when they're working for a municipality, and that's important to proceed, to, to, to preserve. The second thing I would say is, yes, there was, whatever time it became clear to the board, the outgoing board or the incoming board, NISHIP's decision has an impact on our twenty twenty-four budget. We are on, we just hired a comptroller, and it's incumbent on the board to spend some time now understanding the impact. to spend some time now understanding the impact of what happened in December to NISHIP, and to think about the overall budget for this year, and make sure that we are accounting for the impact of that sudden shock and figuring out how to deal with it. And that's, that's a job for all of us over the next couple of months. And the finance committee will meet and start talking about that next week and seeing if we can get the numbers together. So we fully understand the impact.
So, so just to clarify, I'm sorry. Just to clarify, so there has to be some accounting mechanics, if you will, because those HRAs were funded? So there's, there's going to be a redirection of that money into, is that how it's going to work? Okay.
Where, where, where the funding, where people remain on their current coverage, either MVP or NISHIP, Empire, and do not go on Excelsior, then the, the, the funds that had been allocated for the HRAs can be recovered in the budget. And that's one of the reasons to do this, is that, you know, in a bad situation, that's one of the, the ways that we can, you know, provide some protection for taxpayers in addition to the health.
Yeah, and just one follow-on question from, from our attorney. So is there any legal obligation or notification required to employees that we've given them something and we have to take the HRA away? Are they going to be required to get something?
No, I, I think that the discretion lies with the board.
Okay.
And the only other, if I might comment, I wanted to make, pardon me, is in, in addition to the third paragraph up talking about, you know, whatever may come of the negotiations with the union, that there can be a rollback as to the non-union employees and, and, and without the, the reimbursement accounts. In addition to that, the supervisor is being authorized by this resolution to negotiate and to execute memo of agreements. So.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure everybody understands the scope of that.
Thank you, that's, that's clearer, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes six to one, the resolution. I believe that that concludes our agenda for this evening. So I would move to suspend the rules for public comment on any issue that members of the public may want to speak about. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, then, is there anyone who'd like to speak at the end of tonight's meeting on any issue? Anyone here in the room? Do, do you want to, can you come up to the mic so we can? I know, we got to capture, this is on video, so we got to capture everybody in the video system, too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have to tread lightly on what I say here, because I'm a member of a union bargaining committee. So I have to, I find some inconsistencies on when the numbers that came out from NISHIP that you received those to the former board. Those numbers are definitely out before this board came in. The other thing is, is that it's not only just HRAs that are being adjusted. People have already spent money in their HRAs. There's going to be a lot of things here that are going to be, have to be gone through. It's not going to be a simple rollover. The other question I have, as a general question, is how easy is this going to be to move back from one plan to another? Is there going to be any grace period? Is there going to be a period of no insurance? Is there going to be, you know, have you guys looked into that?
So I can say that I have been touching base with the human resources, and there will, we will make absolutely certain that there are no gaps, there will be no gaps in coverage. The, the, the Teamsters are in a little bit of a different position because of the January first start date.
Don't want to speak about anything.
But just to be clear, that we have two groups of employees, the non-union employees and the, the PBA, who were scheduled to go over to Excelsior on February first. And one group, the Teamsters Highway Department employees, who already went over on January first. So we got multiple situations here, but we will absolutely make sure that there's no gaps in coverage, and we have NISHIP's assurance that they will work with us between now and March first. And I've been in conversation with Taryn about trying to make sure that. Obviously, anybody, it would be easier if we can figure out how to make sure that people don't go back over and have to come back again, where we can do that. But that's not the case with the Teamsters, who have already been on the plan for a month. So we'll, we, we, we feel we can, we can work it out. Not surprisingly, you know, it's an issue of working with NISHIP and making sure that, that we've got, we can get the paperwork signed and, and filled out for them, and there's some technicalities. But there will not be any gaps in coverage.
Okay. So the other, the other situation is you also have people that were on MVP. We were given choices here, you know, in the past, MVP, Empire Plan, and then the Excelsior came in. People weren't on the Excelsior, so you have MVP and Empire Plan people.
Right.
Okay, in the past. So the numbers that are out there now, I have all the numbers for all the plans and what percentages and so on. It's minimal cost differential, monthly. We're talking dollars, not hundreds of dollars, dollars. You know, it's not a lot of money differential between MVP and Excelsior. The plan is not, it's basically pennies.
The, the premiums are very similar, the coverage differs.
Coverage differs, correct, but the HR may, HRA is a, is a separate issue, obviously. So I guess the next step is you guys have decided to go back to MVP and Empire, that's what this resolution was?
Well, the resolution is that in terms of the, the two bargaining units, the Teamsters and the PBA, that the board has authorized me to negotiate with both bargaining units and execute a plan based on that negotiation, leaving all other aspects of the contract in place, but discussing this issue only and determining what each bargaining unit wishes to do.
Non-union employees?
Non-union employees, we have just voted to keep on either MVP or Empire, whatever their prior coverage was, and not move to Excelsior. With the two bargaining units, that, that needs to be a conversation that the board's authorized the supervisor to have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone who's on Zoom who would like to speak on any issue? And I believe that we are adjourned. Move, move to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.